Good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for February 19th, 2019. We will tonight make this meeting short. We do have the largest super moon available for viewing outside of 2019, not to be confused with the super blood moon that we had last month on January 21st.
It's a snow moon, isn't it?
It's what?
A snow moon.
They have a couple of different names, but they claim it's the largest super moon of 2019. So, fun fact, and I saw it earlier, it's brilliant. Item number one, if we could call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here. Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Any changes, deletions, additions? Mr. Reynolds?
Just one minor change, Mr. Mayor, on item 4A5. In the resolution, in the seventh paragraph, in the seventh whereas paragraph, we have House File 2851 listed. That should actually be House File 3618. 2851 was the original introduction, but it wasn't passed until House File 3618.
Okay.
So, that's the correct one in the resolution then.
We'll note that correction. Any other changes, additions?
No, sir.
If not, councilmembers?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Agenda's been approved. Item number four, consent agenda. Any additions, deletions? Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Okay. Counselors, Counselor Lehman?
4A4.
I have one pull from consent. Others, others. Seeing none, Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to move the consent agenda as modified.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Before we vote on the consent agenda, we would read it into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. These are the consent agenda items for February 19th of 2019. 4A1 approves the minutes from the February 5th and 12th, 2019 meetings. 4A2 adopts ordinance number 02019-TAC-004, which amends Title 11, Chapter 114 of the City Code related to micro distilleries, and adopts ordinance number, that should be not zero, that's O2019-TAC-005, the official summary of ordinance number O2019-TAC-004, and adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-025, which amends the city's fee schedule related to cocktail room licenses. 4A3 approves the on sale and Sunday on sale liquor licenses for Sapporo Minnesota Incorporated located at 1114 Verling Drive. 4A5 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-028, which supports the repeal of the Dan Patch Communal Rail Line prohibitions located in 2002 Minnesota Session Law, Chapter 393, House File 3618, Section 85, enabling the state of Minnesota, the Metropolitan Council, and regional rail authorities to study the Dan Patch Communal Rail Line. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-20, which accepts monetary donation in the amount of $7,700 from the Shakopee Amateur Baseball Association. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-019, which sets a public hearing date of March 19th, 2019, to consider vacation of all alley right aways located within Block 5, East Shakopee. 4D1 approves a Scott County sub grant program participation and funding for recycling. And finally, 42 authorizes the execution of a professional service agreement with WSB and Associates for design services for the Memorial Park Bridge and Trail Project, which is PA-TAC-19-TAC-19.
All right. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. I do have a motion and a second. Counselor?
Did he read 4D3?
4D3.
Two more?
4D3, the Verling Drive project.
Good catch, I don't know if you did.
4D3.
Thank you.
So, 4D3, my apologies, adopts Resolution 219R-TAC-026, accepting work on Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Verling Drive project, and is issuing final payment for Phase 2 in the amount of $2,093.95 to Eureka Construction Incorporated.
Excuse me, that's 4D3, right? 4D3 is...
4D3 is actually 7A. That was improperly...
4D3 on mine is consent agenda of 2019 Street Utility Reconstruction Project.
Yep, and that is prior to the, prior to the notice being posted, that was changed to 7A. My apologies, that is not a consent item, that is an item for discussion, and it will be numbered 7A. It's a public hearing. My apologies for that.
All right. Correction on the additional read on the consent agenda with a slight modification on the agenda, but motion on the consent, second, read into the public record with clarification. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number five. Now, I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on tonight's agenda. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lilia. I live here in Shakopee. Is that all you need? Okay. I'm just gonna read this. "I'm here in behalf of myself and other beekeepers here in Shakopee to present information about benefits of beekeeping for the city of Shakopee, our crops and the state's economy. Agriculture is a cornerstone of Minnesota's economy. One-third of the food that we consume each day relies on little hard-working pollinators, the bees and other insects. They're one of the world's most important pollinators of food crops. For example, growth of Honeycrisp apple, a prized commodity developed in Minnesota, depends on healthy population of bees. According to Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, as much as 70% of bees' bee population has died as a result of colony collapse disorder in Minnesota. In 2013, Minnesota Statute, Chapter 84.973, Pollinator Habitat Program, directed DNR to establish pollinator best program practices and habitat restoration for state to preserve land to serve as a source for which pollinators can travel to pollinate agricultural crops. Few counties in Minnesota have passed resolutions to encourage pollinator protection. In an executive order by Mark Dayton in August of 2016 emphasizes that Minnesota's $90 billion agricultural sector would not be possible without free service provided by the pollinators. Bees are under attack from variety of sources, ranging from habitat loss to pesticides to climate control. We recognize the importance of pesticides to treat pests, and the Department of Agriculture regulates the use, application, and handling and disposal of pesticides. Dayton states that all Minnesotans have the power to protect pollinators and must work together to make progress towards solution, and this is the reason we gather here. To my knowledge, an issue that stands in the way of providing beekeeping is allergic reaction to bee stings. Bees tend to sting in defense, so most bees won't sting unless they are provoked. More than 100 foods are responsible, 170 foods are responsible to cause allergies. Peanuts, milk, eggs, fish are among the most common foods responsible for most of serious allergic reactions. We don't ask them to be removed from grocery stores because many people experience adverse reactions to them. The benefits of these foods outweigh the risks. Therefore, they are offered to people, but with warning labels for those that are allergic to them. The same goes for the hard-working pollinator bees. Their essentiality and necessity is vital to our crops. Pollinator protection is necessary to ensure a strong state economy, and as Dayton ends his order, I would like to quote him, "We must act together, and we must act now to protect pollinators in Minnesota." Thank you.
Counselor Whiting?
I'd like to ask staff, we had a beekeepers in the backyard ordinance, is that still coming forward?
Not at this time unless council directs it to come forward.
I would move to direct that policy forward in the future.
See that again?
Yeah.
Others, others?
A second.
Okay. Direct staff to see that beekeepers ordinance back in front of us that we had a couple of weeks ago. Further discussion? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes four to one. All right. Thank you very much for your comments on that. Would any other resident like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and welcome. Seeing none then, we will move ahead to item number six, business removed from consent, 4A4. Counselor Lehman?
Find it. 4A4 was a consent item for appointment to boards and commissions that I removed. Actually, I removed it for two specific reasons. One is the recommendation for the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. Being that I just came from the utilities meeting, while I was there, I asked if there was anybody in the room that saw a reason for Mr. Way or not to be reappointed, and there was none. Matter of fact, there was one comment that the current rift between the utilities and the city for a joint meeting that's coming up probably could have been avoided if the liaison would have been more proactive in trying to work out the kinks between the city and the utilities. The document that we have doesn't, doesn't show who the incumbent was with the asterisk, yet it does on the Park and Rec Advisory Board, and it does on the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission incumbent that's being reappointed, that individual voted in favor of violating the Minnesota Land Planning Act on a zoning text amendment to major rec- recreation, which was proved to be the wrong move, according to the comments from the Met Council on the EDA document for Canterbury Commons. Yet, that person is being reappointed, the current president and chair of the utilities. I'm not aware of any reason for that not being reappointed. The attendance seems to be there, gets along well with others, and I don't ever recall replacing a sitting chair or president of the utilities without just cause. So, it also says that the vice chairs were involved in these interviews. I don't believe that to be true in the utilities interview process. So, didn't get a chance to talk to the vice chair, I guess he's out sick, wasn't at the meeting, but I certainly don't support removing the current chair with no justifiable reason, especially after asking if there was anybody there that thought there was reason for that position. So, I'll be voting against that.
Okay. Mayor, we have a subcommittee on that. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, yes. The subcommittee met. I talked to our city clerk, everybody was notified of the meeting dates and times and had acknowledgement. So, the vice chair not being there, I can't address that. What the committee does is comes together and tries to find the best candidates for the job. As far as the utilities, there was some concerns that we had a good candidate for the job, and that was our recommendation. So, therefore, I would make a motion to approve Resolution R2019-027, a resolution appointing individuals to various boards and commissions.
I have a motion and a second.
I'd like to comment a little bit, if we can.
Continue, and then...
You know, we had a lot of great candidates, and appreciate everybody that comes out and volunteers to work for the city as a, you know, on a board and commission that takes a lot of time. So, we appreciate that, and think the committee did its best job and got the best candidates.
Other discussion, Counselor Brennan?
I based my decision on the merits of the candidates and what they brought forward. I didn't base it on what the other person lacked. I think Kathy Mokel brings to the board the experience of the city. She was a liaison for Spock, and she also acted as liaison with the Met Council Land Use Committee, and I think those are all very good attributes, and I think that that would be unofficial to the Spock.
Mayor, with all due respect, the Shakopee Public Utilities being a separate entity from the city of Shakopee by state statute and referendum of the voters is supposed to be specifically looking at the drinking water and the electrical supply needs of the ratepayers, some of which are outside the city proper. So, I, it's not the intent to have candidates on that body that are not fully invested in that mission, but yet instead looking at development patterns of the city and city interest per se. The Shakopee Public Utility is specifically supposed to look at the interest of the water infrastructure and the electrical infrastructure. I don't think there's anything that replaces three years hands-on experience, direct experience, as the president and chair of the utilities to warrant this action.
Did you have another comment, Counselor Lehman, on another candidate on the Planning Commission? You just made a statement about some violation?
Well, the Planning Commission approved the zoning text amendment to the major recreational zoning. The whole time I was saying it needed a comprehensive plan amendment. Granted, it was staff's recommendation for that action, and they were following staff's recommendation, but we learned later that I was actually correct, that the proper action was to amend the comp plan, not to make a zoning text amendment.
So, you're not in favor of this candidate being appointed to the Planning Commission because of that?
Well, is there, I don't, I don't have a list of all the applicants, so, and I wasn't privy to vet them myself, but there's potentially somebody that's more knowledgeable on the Land Planning Act that may have applied.
Well, I mean, you've served on that subcommittee in the past and make appointments as candidates. Obviously, we're not purview to the list of candidates whether, and that's actually the purpose of the subcommittee, right, make a recommendation to this board. That's a, I understand what you were saying, but I, you know, to say that a, an appointed citizen...
There's questions, Mayor, on whether there was a communication problem between the chairman of the Utilities Commission to be at that interview process, and I couldn't ask him because he was out sick today, so I wanted to ask him directly.
Counselor Brennan?
I had talked to Lori Hansen about it. She just did say that there was two phone calls made to that candidate, or to that vice chair, and also I double-checked my emails, and that vice chair did receive an email with a confirmation, like I did, and everybody else did.
All right.
Further discussion? Motion on the table in a second. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. No other consent business? Moving ahead then to 7A, and this is a public hearing. So, we'll start. Counselor Lehman?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting to open the public hearing. Further discussion?
Mayor, since normally this would be stamped "public hearing,"
Yep, I see that.
...and it's not, was this adequately properly notified, three days, whatever it is?
Yeah, before, it was changed after your packets went out, but about 20 minutes after they went out, and so it was actually noticed correctly and posted correctly.
Okay.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, public hearing is now open. Ryan will present. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This is a public hearing for the 2019 Street and Utility Reconstruction Project. This project is in your most recently adopted capital improvement program as CIF 19-TAC-003, has 2019 Street and Utility Reconstruction. One little note, we are removing a portion of the project as identified in this to support the River Bluff development in the future, and to more appropriately time that project with possible future development. So, our proposed project location map, as you can see here, is Scott Street from 4th Avenue to 6th Avenue, a block of 7th Avenue from Somerville Street to Spencer Street, as well as Minnesota Street from 4th Avenue south to the end of the cul-de-sac. Existing conditions for this project, so most of these streets were built between 1980 and 1988. I think that block of 7th Avenue, maybe even before that, has received a couple of overlays. The streets are very wide. Scott Street from 4th to 5th is almost 57 feet wide, and the block from 5th Avenue to 6th Avenue is 44 feet wide. 7th Avenue from Somerville to Spencer is 40 feet wide, and that cul-de-sac of Minnesota Street is 37 feet wide. These areas do have concrete curb and gutter and benefit from storm drainage in the area. There is original concrete sidewalk along portions of this, so Scott Street has some sidewalk from 4th to 5th along the courthouse parking lot, Minnesota Street on the west side for its entirety, and about half of 7th Avenue on the north side. You can see from these pictures, these streets are severely cracked, significant areas of patching, crown problems, settlements and deficiencies in our curb and gutter where there's ponding water, et cetera. And anything future from here will take an inordinate amount of maintenance from Public Works to keep these going. The utilities in these streets, so Scott Street actually has polyvinyl chloride PVC and newer pipe from 4th Avenue to 5th Avenue, but then there's no sanitary sewer from 5th Avenue to 6th Avenue. However, there are two houses that are served on that side, and they have long services that run out into the street and then down to 6th Avenue to the best that we can tell from televising connect that 6th Avenue. On 7th Avenue, there is some vitrified clay pipe, and then on Minnesota Street, it's in a joint trench due to bedrock, there's ductile iron pipe, it's a newer pipe. Sanitary sewer services have been failing throughout the area, there's been several of them recorded as replacing those just due to construction type tree root intrusion. And then as far as water main goes, there's no water main on Scott Street from 4th to 5th. There is a 6-inch cast iron pipe from 5th to 6th. There's no water main along 7th Avenue, so those interior lots, same thing, have long copper services that actually run to the east, out to Spencer Street, and recently discovered that one house actually goes to the backyard through a neighbor's yard and out to Somerville Street. And then Minnesota Street, I just referenced, is ductile iron pipe in a joint trench with the sanitary. So, our proposed improvements here for Scott Street, we're looking to reconstruct the streets to 41 feet wide from that 57 and 44 that I talked about, in a nine-ton design. We are recommending reconstructing the sidewalk along the east side of Scott Street between 4th Avenue and 5th Avenue, and upgrading all the ADA, the pedestrian curb ramps to ADA compliance in this project area. We'll also propose replacing all the drainage structures, upsizing pipes to new standards and to add additional drainage to improve drainage in these areas. And then on 7th Avenue and Minnesota Street, we're proposing to reconstruct the streets to 37 feet wide at a nine-ton design. We would propose to reconstruct the sidewalk on the west side of Minnesota Street, and that small portion on the north side of 7th Avenue, again improving ADA and working on improving drainage in these areas. For the utilities, on Scott Street, we're recommending to extend, to first off, leave that block of 4th Avenue to 5th Avenue alone. It is PVC, televising shows that it's in good condition. There are two services, one that goes to the parking lot that would no longer be used, we can cap that one, and we'll also include plans to reconstruct that service if needed on that first block. That block from 5th to 6th Avenue, we're looking at extending a sanitary sewer main from 6th Avenue up to capture those two houses to provide them a perpendicular service like everybody else in town. We would extend new 8-inch ductile iron pipe water main between 4th and 5th, and a complete Spock's loop gives them the looping that they require, as well as replacing that, or the water main... that sanit, or the water main from Fifth to Sixth Avenue as well. All the sanitary sewer services and water services would be reconstructed from the mains up to approximately the property line and where those curb stops are. On Seventh Avenue, we're recommending reconstructing the existing sanitary sewer main with eight-inch PVC pipe. And then on this, I, I point out that the feasibility study for Minnesota Street shows us replacing the sanitary sewer in Minnesota Street. We've reviewed the televising tapes and I, I just alluded to that the sanitary sewer looks good. We're not sure about the condition of the sanitary sewer services that run from the main out to those houses. And if we're going to put a lot of investment over the top of these pipes, we've hired a contractor to come in and actually televise all those services to see what condition they're in. If all of those turn out to look good, then we'll eliminate the sanitary sewer replacement along this portion of the project. If it's just one or two services, we can dig down and fix a couple of services and save some money. But if we find the majority of the sanitary sewer services in this area are decrepit or in poor condition, then it, it probably makes financial sense to replace the entire sanitary sewer system in this area.
Councilman Lehman?
When you say services, you're talking from the line, main and the road to the property line?
Correct, council member, yes. And then same thing, we would reconstruct the sewer, the sewer services, as you just suggested, from the center of the street or where that main is, to approximately about 10 feet behind the curb, give them new services. Those are included in the feasibility and some of those project costs. And like I said, if, if it turns out that we don't need to do that, we can save the city some money. And then the water main in this area, we would be extending new water main along Seventh Avenue to correct those long services that are running out to Spencer Street. And then the, since the sewer and the water are in the exact same trench along Minnesota Street, if we end up digging up that sanitary sewer, chances are we'll end up needing to replace the water main. They're, they're going to be within a few feet of each other in a trench with rock walls. It's pretty impossible to kind of do one without the other. The age of the water main, it doesn't have to be replaced if we aren't doing the sewer. So they kind of go hand in hand here. When we do these projects, we always improve everything in the area. Street lighting is, is one of those things. So the, the separate maps here that you can see, the little green dots are freestanding wood poles right now. Those will be replaced with fiberglass pole, the cutoff type LED light fixtures, some underground service to get to those. I think there's one multi-use pole that would have like electric and cable and other stuff on head, on overhead. That one, we would just replace the light head on top of the pole, not necessarily the pole itself. We'd like to bring up to council and the residents that these projects do come with their inconveniences and there's a variety of pictures here that kind of illustrate this. We're working in a narrow road corridor. We've got to dig deep holes and put that dirt somewhere. So you can see some of these pictures, there's moments while the construction's occurring that it's impassable. On a Monday night, I might get a phone call that it's dry and dusty and by Tuesday morning we've got two inches of rain and now the entire site is mud. So these are realities that residents have to kind of put up with. You can see we pull out the curb and gutter. We have to rip out the ends of driveways to kind of tie back in the new street grades. You can kind of see that bottom-middle picture, even some dirt being tracked into that gentleman's driveway. When we install the new curb and gutter, for instance, residents can't necessarily get over that. We need a few days for that to cure. So, and, and then that kind of bottom-right picture, the paving, I need some time to get that pavement down, roll it. You got vibration, dust, noise, a lot of things that go with these. Hopefully, it's worth it to everybody. Here you can see restoration of these. So when we get done with this, brand-new streets, new curb and gutter, you can see that the ends of those driveways are repaired and replaced with whatever materials that they had. Some of those areas that we narrowed the streets, we fill those in with topsoil. We sod everything, restored just about everything. You can see that one picture, mailbox is replaced, a tree that was replaced because they lost one due to a sewer and water service that was underneath that, their tree. Edging, landscape mulch, I think maybe just some perennials and shrubs that maybe we don't replace with these projects. So here's your proposed, proposed apportionment of this project. The assessments will equate to $123,000. The capital improvement fund would fund $696,000. The storm sewer fund, $156,000. Shakopee Public Utilities for $259,000 and the sanitary sewer fund for $163,000. So a total project cost of $1.397 million. This is a council-initiated CIP project that does require a supermajority vote to proceed. Our assessment method for this project, so we took 30% of the street costs and that's how we determine the assessment rate. We looked at all these single-family residential lots as, on average, 60 feet comparable to the rest of kind of that old downtown of Shakopee and so we're basing their assessment on that typical 60-foot front footage. The multifamily lots along Minnesota Street would be assessed consistent with policy and past practice at a rate of one-half, single-family per multifamily unit. And then the institutional uses, which really are the two government parking lots that are out here, would be based or assessed on a front-footage basis. There are corner lot adjustments made as well. Here's a map of what that looks like. Those pink properties are those single-family, the blue is that institutional use, and the green properties are those multifamily uses. And the little stars would indicate the corner lot, so they would pay one-half for each street frontage. So if they're on the corner of Scott Street and Fifth, they would, when we do Fifth Street, we would assess them a half a unit there and then a half a unit on Scott Street. Here's a preliminary project schedule. City Council's already received the report and called the public hearing tonight here at February 19th. Moving forward, we're looking at bringing a project to you guys to approve the plans and specs as early as March 5th. The city would receive and open project bids around April and bring it back to City Council to ask you to consider a ward of contract. We start construction spring of the year, so May 2019, with substantial completion for this project around the end of September, early October. We would bring this back to City Council to declare costs to be assessed in October of this year and then hold that final assessment, public hearing in November of 2019. And that's all I have for you. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Questions of staff? Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, 2016, we did the road in front of my house. Anybody out in the audience that is having their, is part of this project? If you have any questions, you talk to Ryan, he's going to help you out. He, he does amazing work for the city and answered every question I ever had and any question my neighbors had, so I appreciate that. If anybody calls me, I'm going to point them right in your direction because I know you have the answers, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Whiting. I would point out that last week, Tuesday evening, while you were holding your workshop session, we did have a public information meeting that we mailed all the residents and asked them to come to a meeting to present this exact information as well as kind of an informal session for all the residents to really ask specifics about their property, maybe identify any situations or circumstances that we don't know about or any hardships that they may have. It was a cold night and I think kind of back-to-back-to-back snowstorms, so we literally only had two properties that showed up to, to work through it. No significant concerns or questions from any residents so far on this project that we've heard from.
If I could follow up? I do, I appreciate all your work and you may not be able to answer, this is more of a generalization. Can you go back to Seventh Avenue? Little diagram there you had? Yeah, so, correct me if I'm wrong, the dark blue is the sidewalk reconstruction?
Yes, sir. That is correct, Councilmember Lehman.
So we have, and I'm bringing this up to, mostly for the, the council here and staff, but here we are again with a reconstruction project and we don't have a sidewalk policy where we can try and fix some of these gaps in the sidewalk. And I know three years ago, prior to the Third Avenue project, I wanted to get us to get a policy together and I'm going to ask staff to do that again. We have a new council here. I think that's important that we discuss the sidewalks and the trails and the access, so Mr. Reynolds, if you want to address that.
Yeah, we're in the process of not just doing a sidewalk policy, but doing a comprehensive look at our trails and sidewalks across the board throughout the whole city to identify those pieces that, that need connections and identify areas that are significantly opposed to having either a sidewalk or trail due to some kind of, of physical barrier or other issues involved. So you can expect that in the future. And since the, the Third Avenue project, we've had a new city engineer and director of Public Works, we have a new planning director, and so this is one of those things that is on the list of things to get completed.
Well, thank you. You know, I don't want to point out this particular property owner, and I think you answered the question earlier, there's some significant trees on this site that I wouldn't feel comfortable knocking down to put in a sidewalk. But if you're out walking the streets of the historic Shakopee, the lower, I call it lower town, there's areas where you're walking along a sidewalk and you have to stop and walk out into the road because the sidewalk ends. And maybe it's some legitimate reasons, but I think we need to have that discussion. That's all I have.
I, yeah, Councilman Lehman?
Two questions, Mayor. First one is the sewer and water in Minnesota Street. If it's determined that that does not have to be done or has to be done, that's not going to affect the assessments because that portion of the project is paid out of the water fund or the sewer fund?
That is correct, council member. The sewer is paid for out of the sanitary sewer fund, the water main is paid for out of the, from Shakopee Public Utilities. The assessments are based on 30% of the street improvement costs, so the blacktop surface, the curb and gutter, the sod, driveway restoration, items like that.
Some of the subbasing of that supports the road. My second question, the estimate numbers that we have for this project, 1.3 million, 1.4 we'll call it because it's 97,000. When we actually go out and get firm numbers, if them firm numbers are twice as much, we can stop at that point and re-figure this project, correct?
That is correct. So we ask, we will bring plans back to you to approve, to go out for bids, and then we will also come back to City Council to ask the council to approve that bid or that construction contract. So this is just moving forward with the public hearing portion at this point to order the, the improve, the, the design and the improvements.
Okay.
Councilor Whiting?
I'm sorry, yeah, Councilman Lehman brought up another question on Minnesota Street. You talked about having that televised and looking at the services. Now, our project handles the services to right past the sidewalk, let's say, right inside the property line. Now, this is the perfect time for homeowners, if they do have tree root problems or damage from the house to that service connection, to have that fixed. Am I correct?
Yeah, I, thank you, Councilmember Whiting. These projects, since if, if we dig up the rest of those pipes, it's a perfect opportunity. Everything else is a mess. A lot of times, we can approach our general contractor and ask them if they kind of a bulk price can help those residents out on their own contract. In the city of Shakopee, residents do own their sewer and water services from the connections at the main to the front of their house. But as we're making a significant cost improvement on the roadway overhead, we always look at those infrastructure, those pipes underneath to make sure that we upgrade those or make sure those are, are in good condition as well. So when we come through, we reconstruct those pipe systems at that time. So we, but we only replace them to the property line, the city has no right to go beyond that on a property.
Now, I had the clay pipe at my house and tree roots were getting in there. Every year I had the rotor ruder out there, once a year at least to fix that. So I replaced from the house to the service connection and the water line, too. And I, I don't regret it. I've never had the, had to clean it out since, but find some wood here to knock on, but that's the time to do it because you don't, in, in the situation where you're rebuilding the sidewalk, the homeowner won't have to pay for that sidewalk, have to pay for that curb if they have to dig into that. So that's really the time for that homeowner to make that fix.
Great points, Councilmember Whiting.
Other questions, Ryan? I have a couple. When I, you know, when I look at the, the screen here and look at the assessments, I, I look and go, oh, those assessments are 10, less, little less than 10% of the entire project. But that's not the full story though because it's just for the street improvements, right?
That is correct. So, thank you, Mayor Mars, that the assessments are based on 30% of those street improvement costs and then, yeah, 30% of the street improvement costs. So 70% of that is being spread out, capital improvement fund, which is generally tax levy that, that picks up the rest of that.
And then I have another question on Minnesota Street. Really on the south end that, after the cul-de-sac, I believe years ago, if I'm not mistaken, we used to have a surface water drainage problem there. Has that, has that been repaired or?
I think, Mayor Mars, you're referring to, there is a, it is a surface water swale, drainage ditch, whatever you'd like to call it. And years back, we reconstructed a portion of Dakota Street in that area and I know that we, there was a portion of that ditch that ran adjacent to Dakota Street and we did do those improvements. The remainder of this ditch actually sits on the association property and we have kind of a DNU over it. Nothing additional has been done there, but we also have not heard complaints or issues from the, that association.
I know that it was on the open property of the association and how it tied into the street and there was a problem. I just want to, I'm looking if we're going in there and I don't know if there hasn't been a further problem, not a, nothing, nothing more on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Mars. No, no notification to us that that's a future issue or a continuing issue. And as well in this, if you kind of notice, the storm sewer actually runs to the north of Fourth Avenue for this particular block, so we're not proposing to increase any surface water flow to that ditch or create any additional issue. So there's no need, need to get into that surface water improvement.
My last question involves, this project seems, you know, it's not like a whole street or four or five blocks. It seems like a little hodgepodge. Any particular, usually the city's pretty orderly and they go about things, it bounces around a little bit, kind of unique this year, any particular reason for that?
Mayor and council members, I would just say that I think these are kind of the, for whatever reasons, the little portions that didn't fit into adjacent projects. Maybe we overlaid some streets that had newer pipes underneath, so we didn't overlay this street because the sewer was older. And so it's just kind of the hodgepodge. We're getting down there on our street reconstruction projects. We've got to get that, that area of Levy Drive next year as well as I think Park Ridge Drive, oh, kind of that Howard area. So a couple of projects left, but we're getting down there on full street reconstructions at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I agree. It's a night and day from the prior two years, the last two years, we had major projects all in one location. It was Shakopee Avenue, both east and west of Marshall Road, both separate years, both substantial projects, so.
Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, Ryan, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and make comment on this proposed street reconstruction project for 2019? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Bob Cole. I live at 340 West Fifth Avenue. I'm the guy on the corner of Fifth and Scott. And I missed the meeting last week, sorry. With this narrowing of the street, the government center parking lot there, when you narrow the street, are you coming in from both sides?
Speak here, Ryan can hear you and he will come up and address your question if needed.
All right. Will you be narrowing the street from both sides equally or is one side get pushed in and the other side stays the same? The reason I'm asking is because the ADA corner was redone on my corner this week or last year, so that would be completely torn up and redone if you go from both sides. Is there an answer to that question?
Ryan, thank you.
Yeah, so Mayor and council members, we typically try to center these roadways right down the middle of the right-of-way corridor. So any kind of changes, hardship or benefit to narrowing or widening streets, it's each, generally within a couple of inches. It's the same on both sides of the street. So we would need to narrow that. A lot of times, we can tie into those curb returns. I think in this particular instance, we may have to remove that ped ramp that was recently redone. But there are instances where I can tie right back into those street returns or those radiuses without having to necessarily remove those. So we'll take a look at this one in particular and see if we can preserve that.
Councilman Lehman?
If that ped ramp that has been removed is on this city easement right away, will that be replaced then as it was?
Councilmember Lehman, yes. Any, any infrastructure improvements like a set, sidewalk ADA facility, we would... Any, any infrastructure improvements, like a set, sidewalk ADA facility, we would replace that, reconstruct that as part of this project.
To what it was, so you'll be back to where you were?
Yeah, well, I just, it was brand new.
Right, it's going to be newer, yeah.
It's sad that it's got to be turned, torn up again. One more question is?
Mr. Cole, thank you. Speaking to the mic?
Yes, I will. The people that practice their parallel parking, that goes on virtually 24 hours a day. With the narrowing of the street, how has that impacted, or where do those people go to, to practice? Because that, that narrows the street quite considerably, and there is a significant amount of people practicing.
It gets used. We have a couple of locations. Ryan?
Yeah, Mayor and councilmembers, now they hear that, it does kind of bring up, I've driven through and seen that. There's other areas in town. I know I've seen in the Shakopee High School parking lot. I don't know which agency in particular is maybe doing that. Even at 37, in, in fact, these streets would be 41 feet wide, that still allows parking on both sides of the street, as well as two travel lanes. Not saying you want to be like the city of Minneapolis or others. Some of those have a standard street width of 28 feet, still allowing parking on both sides, and cars still seem to fit through there. So, I get that it might rush those students into making that parallel park sooner if somebody's coming. This isn't a collector roadway. I don't think it sees high volumes, but, I mean, that could still be facilitated. However, I would say ultimately, too, the city doesn't always encourage basketball hoops or other things out in that right-of-way facility, so that's, yeah, it's a public street, it's still open.
Who controls those parallel parking facilities? Who controls those? The city?
In this instance, councilmember, Mayor and Council, I, I don't know if this is something that the county offers.
I would suggest maybe community education.
Yeah. Okay, Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I know there's a couple of driving, independent, private driving schools that throw their own cones out and do it also.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Mr. Cole, great comments.
That's it. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
So, you will get one more pass with the lawnmower. Maybe two.
Ryan and I are going to have to have a little discussion. Thank you all.
And a year from now, more area for storage for snow. Great. This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this reconstruction project for 2019? Seeing none, Councilor Lehman?
Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second from Councilor Brennan to close the public hearing. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Councilor Lehman?
Offer resolution R-219-017, ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specs for 2019 Street Utility Reconstruction Project, CIF 19-003.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Brennan. Further discussion? I guess I just want to, we asked staff of a couple of questions about the street reconstruction, and mainly sidewalks and infill, missing links, and a pretty good response on the one that has a lot of trees on it, and a, you know, and, but I, I look forward to having a, a plan, too. And that apparently is coming in our master plan thing. You know, there are some missing segments, you know, and, and safety and walkability are important, so I look forward to that. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, staff. Moving ahead to the highlight of the evening. 781 Monthly Financial Review. Darren, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I got word shortly before this presentation, I got to keep it short and sweet, so. I am grateful, though, that Mr. Reynolds has moved out of his hard cast into the soft cast now. It's going to make life a little bit more.
He always says he's going to put you in a headlock.
Doesn't hurt as much anymore?
Right, it doesn't hurt as much anymore.
Looking better.
So, obviously, we're just into one month of the, of the new fiscal year, so there isn't a whole lot to report at this point in time. Do want to point out just a, a couple real quick highlights on your, on your general fund revenues for January. You will see one, there we go, one red arrow, and that is under your special assessments, and that's really in regards to the payment to Republic Services that we make for the delinquent utility, delinquent garbage bills. With our contract with Republic, we guarantee that they're delinquent accounts that we pay for them, and then we assess those property owners throughout this year. And so, we'll collect those delinquent assessments with our tax receipts that come in in June and December this year. So, that number will get to zero. The $29,000 payment is actually a negative revenue. It was the payment we made to Republic in, in January now. So, that number will be negative for a while, and we'll see that go away as we get our tax proceeds in throughout the year. Looking at your licenses and permits, they're 21% of your budget already. So, we did receive the BHS permit, their permit fees for that housing facility, that senior housing facility out on the west end, so that is, was a big, is a big project, and so there's lots of fees associated with that, and accounting for a lot of that, that budget allotment already. Your intergovernmental revenue, comparing this year to last year at the same point, last year we had about $213,000. January this year, we didn't have any. That's really related to our municipal state aid maintenance dollars. Last year, they came in on January 31st. This year, they came in on like February 3rd or something to that nature. So, it's just a, a timing difference there as well, too. So, that's really about it for your revenues. Again, you're like, your taxes won't come in until, till June and December and such like that, and those are our big tax collections there, so. Scrolling through your, your expenditures, nothing necessarily abnormal. We talked a little bit about the, the council and mayor expenditure budget line last time, and that's really due to front-loading a lot of the expenditures on, with the council and mayor for dues and associations and things like that, that get paid for at the beginning of the fiscal year, so. Nothing abnormal there. Everything looks good at, to this point. So, any questions on that?
Questions on the?
And here again, we'll look at a little bit of the community center, some of the operations there, Sand Venture, Ice Arena and the community center itself. The only major change, obviously, your revenues and expenditures are all the same here as well, too. Nothing really to report. Everything looks on course. The one thing that I would like to point out is that my past reports would combine the Sand Venture and community center. We separated those beginning in 2018. We started isolating those business units or those, those operations. And now, with 2019 here, we're able to actually show a comparison there. So, now we actually have Sand Venture. You can see this is the 0672 business unit, Ice Arena 0673, and the 0674 is, is community center. So, just a little different presentation of this, of this, but it should provide a little bit better information, a little bit clearer as far as our, all of our operations overall, so. With that, I don't really have anything else.
Questions on this, for Sand Venture, or the whole thing?
The whole thing. That, you know, Sand, I mean, at this point in time, our, none of the revenues or expenditures look out of line compared to the budget, so.
I have a couple of questions on the Sand Venture for year-to-date actual in 2019. That's income, revenues, 567?
Correct.
Have we sold some passes already that?
We must have.
Okay. And then my next question, Ice Arena operating expenditures, year-to-date actual 2018 versus year-to-date actual 2019. Those expenditures go from $35,000 down to 19. It's a snapshot in time. Seems like for 2019, where the operational expenditures are way down. Is there?
It's, it's more than likely, I didn't look into that specific line item, but it's more than likely just a, a timing difference there, again, just like that revenue we reported with the municipal state aid maintenance, is that there might be a utility bill or something to that nature that wasn't paid or was paid in the previous year on that end.
It's caught me a little, because I understand when you talk about revenues about, especially for the Ice Arena, when it, those big contract dollars come in at certain times and when they come in, but I, operating expenses, I'm looking for, you know, more of a steady line, and it just caught my eye.
And, and I think there might have been last year, I thought there was some HVAC maintenance stuff that was done right away at the beginning of the year, or something to that nature, but there again, it's one month into it, it's, it's a little hard to see some trends in that, but I can take a peek and see if there was something that, that popped out from one year to the next and let, let the council know on that, so.
And then just a couple more here. Community center revenues, obviously, same type of analysis I look at year-to-date for 2018 versus 2019. The revenue line seems to be up. Conversely, the, the operating expenditure seemed to be down a little bit. Same sort of catch-22 on that?
It could very well be. It's, it's really difficult to, without looking at every single transaction and comparing it from one year to the next, to, to see it after one month, one month's time. You know, if we look at it on a quarterly basis or something of that nature, you'd be able to pop out a little bit easier.
I always like to see revenues up and expenses down.
And our deferred revenues, I know I mentioned last month that our deferred revenues had changed a little bit. As you can see here now, in, in January, they're, they're pretty similar from one year to the next. They're down just a little bit, but we had that, a bigger spike in it last month compared to this month, so.
And that might remain more static, though.
It, it should, yes.
Councilmember Lehman?
Mayor, I just look at it as about a million bucks total. So, next month, it'll be 750 that we're subsidizing it, and the month after, it'll be 500,000. And by the end of the year, it'll be breaking even, right?
Well, the numbers and the trend, I think you've been on it, I've been on it, I think are important, and we're getting more of a clearer snapshot of time and use, where it seemed to be driving up some revenue is good. The operating expenditures are kind of, you know, streamlining a little bit where we can find efficiencies. Our membership is going through the roof. I look at that, I drive by the community center every day, their parking lot has always got activity, which is great.
Parking problem over there?
Well, you know, on some nights, yeah, then they park on the street, and, you know, you know, when I look at that community center and see that lot full and they're parking on the street, I go, we got something good here, and I, I'm a big fan of that, but activity going along all the time, so. Further questions?
You know, 50 below is great for making ice, not so good if you're swimming in the pool in the community center.
The place is packed, though.
Oh, right. Takes a little bit to heat the building in.
Other questions? Other questions? If not, Darren?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now that we got the money report out of the way, now we can move on to 782 and talk about solid waste and recycling. Welcome, Bev.
Thank you so much for having me back this year. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the 2018 Shakopee Annual Report. For those of you who don't know me, Councilor Brennan and Councilor Contreras, I'm Bev Matisson with Republic Services. I'm the Municipal Services Manager, and I'm here to serve the city of Shakopee. Recycling, let's start with recycling because we know that Shakopee loves to recycle. We had another good year of results when it came to recycling. Recycle, Shakopee recycled 2,640 tons this year, which was absolutely phenomenal, another great year. Volumes compared to year-over-year remained somewhat flat. And you might think, why is flat so great? Let me tell you. There's a lot of light weighting right now with manufacturers. That water bottle that you have next to you, Mr. Reynolds, at one time was 22 grams. Today, it is seven. So, we have to recycle about three times more product to get that tonnage. So, good job there. Shakopee residents have become better recyclers in the last year. This last year, we put a lot of effort and resources into recycling education. With China Sword, which I spoke about last time I was here, we said, we need to really reduce the number of contaminants and recycle the products that are truly clean. We've taught our residents to recycle, clean, empty, dry. Things are going quite well there, and I would like to publicly thank Kristin Doran. She is one of your communication coordinators. She's done a fantastic job in the last year of getting the message out to your residents. Shakopee's recycling tonnage not only was just great because it's the right thing to do, but it had a big impact on our environment by reducing greenhouse gas and through water savings and tons of trash avoided. Mixed paper alone was equivalent to over 1,200 trees saved. 5,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide were avoided last year by your efforts. It gets better. 225 cubic yards of landfill space, that's what, that's what we saved. And the best part here that I thought was that, or 12, well, nearly 12 million gallons of water was saved last year through the results right here in Shakopee. So, great job. And we'll continue to work together to clean up the stream and also increase our volumes over the next year. Just a little recap for some of our, some of our new counselors. Last year, I spoke about China Sword. We've seen a lot advertised, we've seen a lot of newscasts about China recyclables, and, and as we know, they made, they're making an effort to clean up their country. It makes a lot of sense, but about 40% of our stream was going there nationwide. So, a significant reduction in acceptable contamination levels was really the focus. When China said, we are reducing contamination levels from 3% to 0.5%, that impacted our industry greatly. Additionally, China banned all mixed paper from import, so that was another big challenge for us. Reductions took effect in March of 2018, which drove costs and changes at most recycling facilities across our country. So, where are we today? Today, normal supply and demand theories are currently in play. Excess material results in low and negative value for most commodities, most notably mixed paper and mixed plastics. Only 35% of processed commodities have current value today. That would be metals and your old corrugated cardboard. What that is, is the, the three-tier cardboard with a little wavy piece in the middle, that nice thick cardboard. So, that has, that has some decent value right now. Recycling processors, we included, were able to move all of our product, but average values are down 50% or more from recent years. So, again, it's been a little bit more challenging for us. As I mentioned, we're doing a good job cleaning up our stream. One of our initiatives in 2018 is we rolled out additional education on our website, a new website, recyclingsimplified.com. You've seen that on your calendars, recycling calendars. You've seen that on some of the education material that Kristin has put out for us. In the, on that website, please note that there's a lot of materials that you can download. It's free. Download it for schools, download it for your own use. Please take a look at that website if you haven't already. There's a lot of great resources there. We put a lot of time and effort and investment in putting that together for you. Lastly, I want to touch on the 27 opportunities that we identified in early 2018, and also, those were, those were opportunities. What did we achieve throughout the year? Number one was billing. We had some billing issues last year. Fuel and environmental fees. What we did in 2017 is we, we learned that we had over $6,000 that were charged to Shakopee residents in the, in, in the form of fuel and environmental fees. Those were all credited back. We took it a step further, and I did an audit and went back to the beginning of the contract 2014. I found another $6,400 there of fuel and environmental fees that had been charged to your residents, and they were all credited back. In 2018, I stood before you, and I said that I would initiate quarterly audits for those environmental and fuel fees to ensure that your residents are being charged appropriately. At first, you know, we had, we had, let's say, 25 residents. At first, you know, we had, we had, let's say, twenty-five residents that had bills that, that were incorrect. I'm happy to report that as the year went through, each quarter, we saw, through education efforts and coaching, we saw that number go down. We're now to a point four percent error rate on fuel and environmental fees. So, we've made some good traction this year. In 2019, I will continue to audit that billing to make sure that we keep doing what we say we're gonna do and provide your residents with accurate billing. Customer Service Center. This was a to- topic, a big topic of conversation last year. There were a lot of concerns that you brought forward in March. Since then, we've developed an escalation process that's working quite well. We've added that escalation process to your current contract. Why? We're committed to making sure that this escalation process is followed. Yesterday, an escalation appeared on my desk. Um, thank you, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Burkett, for that. I am happy to report, um, it was, it was a little difficult. I've got, I've, I've done a thorough investigation. I've had a conversation with staff. We had a resident call in who had a very poor customer experience with our call center. I think most of you, if not all of you, have heard about that. And I had the opportunity to visit with that gentleman who had a legitimate concern. I'm happy to say that we did an investigation. His bill has been corrected, appropriately credited, and again, made that, that personal apology to that resident who has now said, "Thank you so much for taking care of this and for calling me." Now, with that, I also want to say that I had the tapes pulled from that conversation. When I spoke with staff this morning, I, I didn't have the second tape. I listened to the second tape, and I will say, my apologies to all of you. We had a call center agent that spoke, I'm not sure where she got her information, it very incorrectly, inaccurate. The, the actual representative said to the customer, um, when she was trying to explain the bill, that this particular charge was an insurance, a cart insurance fee, which does not exist. There is no such thing. I've never heard of such a thing. And, and so, it was, it was very interesting to hear that. So, the resident did report this incident accurately. Um, that has been played for both our GM, our finance manager as well, who will be visiting our call center next month. On top of that, um, corrective action has been initiated, and my apologies to all of you. I know that it's very rare we get an escalation such as that, but I wanted to be fully transparent and to let you know that I don't know where that came from. It was never a discussion between Republic Service, Services, Staff, Council, and again, a heartfelt apology. Recycling calendars. We had a bit of, um, difficulty in the fourth quarter of 2017 when we mailed out our 2018 recycling calendars. Some of the residents received two calendars, a blue one and a gray one, and that caused some confusion. I'm happy to report that we reassessed that. It was an upload error, and this year, the correct calendars went out. So, we'll continue with that process moving forward. Spring cleanup. Spring cleanup was another success this last year. Over thirty-three tons of solid waste were hauled out. So, it was a fun event. You all have such a great turnout here, and we're very happy to be part of that event. And then, community involvement. Last year, Republic Services employees participated in some community involvements here in, in Shakopee. It was super fun, and we look forward to also participating in some events this year. So, if you have something in mind, you all know how to reach me. So, what does 2019 look like? Well, we have our spring cleanup. Um, we have that scheduled for April twenty-seventh. I'm sure there's plenty out there right now in terms of advertising. It's a good, strong event. Recycling. We will provide more education for recycling. We know with China Sword, we're kind of fighting a bit of, of a, of a battle here, um, with the markets. So, on top of the standard contract language, I've put together three additional education pieces that have been already sent to the city to use at their discretion, use when it's most appropriate in terms of timing, with the focus of increasing volume but decreasing the contamination. I left the fourth one so that we can discuss together where are, we can reevaluate mid-year and say, where are our opportunities in recycling, and then I'll create that piece as well. Billing audits will continue, as I mentioned. Um, in the incidents that I dealt with yesterday, I did notice that there was a coding error. This particular resident that I spoke to yesterday, um, was billed a cart service fee instead of a residential service fee, which affected the rate slightly, but it was to the, to the homeowner's benefit. And so, um, with that, I've already started that audit. I've identified that we have a segment of twenty-five residents who have been misbilled. I will be reviewing those to make sure that nobody was overcharged. If they were overcharged, then what will happen is they will be credited. I also reported this to staff and told staff that myself and my coordinator will personally call all of those residents so that they'll understand what that credit is before they receive their bill. So, continued audits this year. And also continued focus on streamlining processes to improve your residents' experience, both in customer service and just collection service. We're relentless in servicing your residents, and we will continue to do so in 2019. And of course, continued commitment to your community. Questions?
Thank you, Bev. Um, I think we do have some comments or questions. Uh, Councilwoman Lehman?
Sure. Um, I appreciate you, uh, taking care of the customers that, uh, you mentioned and, uh, all the work you've done to improve the service, and, uh, we, we appreciate that. Anytime a resident has a concern like that, um, so, many times it comes to our level, and, and we appreciate that you're taking care of it at your level. You mentioned, uh, Republic wanting to get involved in the community and being involved in the community and looking for, uh, some opportunities, and I think we're gonna be talking about one later. Our chamber is having a, uh, Main Street program has their events this year. There may be some opportunities to help with some recycling there, or possibly a Main Street sponsor. You guys need to talk, you know, there you go. Um, as the liaison, I gotta try and do what I can.
I love it.
Uh, so, uh, there's some opportunities, and we hope to get you involved. Uh, you know, you talked about thirty-three tons at our, uh, cleanup day. I, I thought that came from my garage. But, uh, maybe not so much, but, uh, I, I think I was there a few times.
Well, and I can tell you, both, uh, Mr. Burkett and I were also there, uh, working, uh, I was working with the Rotary with Bridging, and I think I carried another thirty tons, uh, that particular day, so.
But thank you. There's some opportunities there, and I appreciate anything you can do.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Mayor, thanks for coming. I want to take the opportunity that you have right now with the public's eye on, on camera on you and go over the customer service. You know, we get customer service complaints, billing complaints, um, and, you know, we've talked about dedicated supervisor or this escalation system. So, give us an overview of, of how this process works. So, customer has a concern, they call your number. Walk us through how to properly do it from the consumer's side so that it's flawless.
I think that's a really great question, and so let's discuss that so that we're all clear and for all that are viewing, they know the process. What that is, is the customer calls into the customer service group. Well over ninety percent, if not ninety-eight percent of those customers are serviced, one-call resolution. Let's say the customer's not satisfied or does not get resolution or is told that they will be called back by a supervisor. Let's say they don't get called by, by a supervisor and they call in again. By that time, customer's getting a little frustrated. So, at that point, I would advise, and what our process is, is if our resident has difficulty in getting an issue resolved, whether it be billing, service, et cetera, then they go to the city and their contact is Nathan. Nathan will then communicate with either Katie Lindholm, if it, if there's anything to do with moving a truck. She is our operations supervisor. She can dispatch very quickly and get the customer concern resolved very quickly. If it has to do with billing, anything contact, contract related, um, then Nathan communicates with myself, and then I resolve that. I call the customer, first look into it, call the customer, get more facts, get it taken care of. Generally, that is within a twenty-four hour period, unless I'm waiting for something from another department. We have had some discussion in, um, just of late, and we're looking at some additional opportunities, um, such as if we could come up with, um, an email address. So, if the resident didn't want to call, they could email, and that would go directly to Republic Services locally for us to handle, and that would be manned by Delaine and myself. So, there are some options. There were, right now, especially at late with the, with the last concern that was brought to us, we said, "Let's, we've improved this over the last year with this current process. How can we do better?" And so, that's also part of the conversation that the, our GM, Brandon, and our finance manager, Maria, will be having at the call center next month. So, there will be more to come, but the current, currently what the process is, is if you need help beyond the customer service line, you call Nathan. Nathan communicates with either myself or Katie, and we're on it.
So, are they calling one central phone number to Republic, which is the number on the billing, I would assume?
Yes, and that goes into our call center.
Okay. Um, how do we not get a call representative that's working Cottage Grove or something that knows Shakopee specifically, or is that already set up on your end?
Help, I, I'm gonna ask you to restate that.
Do they know by the billing? Uh, if I call in and...
Oh, okay. I think I, I think I understand what you're asking. So, when the call, when, when the agent answers the phone, we can tell what area that is from, you know? And what happens is then on the screen, it pops up that this is a Shakopee customer. There is a knowledge tool that we have with a lot of the information there. You know, everything from Christmas tree pickups to rates, to what are your service options available here? Do you have yard waste available? Do you not? And it's generally a two-page document, and it's a synopsis of all your services. And so, the agent sees that and can read through that and answer the questions.
Okay. And then if it goes to Nate, do they call regular City Hall and ask for Nate by, by name? Or is there a line specifically for that?
Uh, Mayor and Councilwoman Lehman, it, all of the staff around here know that if they get a call related to Republic Services, um, if it's something that they feel comfortable handling, because sometimes it is, it's a fairly simple question that they can do that on their own, but that I'm the main contact if it's something beyond that.
Okay. And then they forward it to you?
Yeah, I'll get them from either the front desk, or sometimes they'll call over to Public Works. Sometimes they call me directly. It, that's usually how it works. It doesn't seem like they have a difficulty reaching me when they need to.
All right.
And likewise, as customers do call in, they save my number. So, there are, on occasion, someone will say, you know, "I just didn't feel like calling the call center, but I had your number. Can you help me?" And absolutely, we help them.
Uh, more comments? Bev, uh, I've, uh, I've seen some improvements, and obviously I see a lot more. Um, you know, a year ago, we had that billing snafu that you worked on and, and resolved. Um, now all of a sudden, it's a year later, we're just, discussing a, uh, extension, and all of a sudden, there were, some residents got some, what I call weird billing, uh, odd amounts, you know, five, six dollars that usually a monthly garbage bill or a quarterly mu- uh, garbage bill is around fifty-some dollars. Um, I even got, our family got some seventy-one cent credit, and I, I asked my wife if she overpaid the bill, and she said, "No, I paid the amount." Um, you know, billing is, uh, and now we had this, uh, we all were aware of this, uh, cart insurance situation, so, but billing and, and streamlining that billing to make it better for our community.
Yeah, and I, and I understand exactly what you're saying, and when we're billing on a quarterly basis, if we make a rate adjustment within that three-month period, that's where you see those funky adjustments. However, when a resident sees those and doesn't quite understand the bill, again, it's our obligation at the call center then to be able to answer those questions and walk the resident through that bill. Lot of folks got credits. We rarely hear from them. But when there's an additional charge or a small charge, then we'll hear from them. And that's where that coaching and training comes in in terms of making sure the call center's prepared to answer those questions. I will say too, if a resident, let's say, gets a bill for two dollars or two cents, they can pay that with their next bill. They don't have to go online and pay anything under five dollars because you'll never be assessed a late fee for anything under five dollars, just so that you know.
I guess, uh, you know, I've, I've taken calls, uh, Nate has a lot of, you know, seems like, uh, they call, they, they get off the phone, and that's where Councilmember Lehman was going, and they get frustrated. And, you know, I've gotten, in the last week, five calls, multiple emails, and they, you know, and so it kind of goes to you, comes back around, talk to Nate. I haven't called you in a week or so. Um, just trying to find a better solution, and especially the, the solution that can better offer that one-stop, you know, solution. Here I have concerns, here they are, thank you very much, I'll get that straightened around or whatever the situation is, where it doesn't affect, you know, five council members or, uh, Nate as much. I know Nate's the point of contact, but, uh, you're the contract holder. We, we want you to, uh, handle that, and it just, sometimes there's been some bumpy roads and particularly just over the last thirty days, so that's kind of my comment. And room for improvement on the customer service.
There is room for improvement there, and like the slogan says, "Never stop improving." So, we will continue to make improvements in that area. And, um, as we, as we come, a- as we're able to implement that, I will report back to you on that.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Mayor, I did have another area I was gonna ask about. I like the emails and calls from our constituents. It's kind of my report card on how you're doing. So, I'm, I'm abs- I'm okay with that. It's part of the job. The damaged carts, if you got a broken wheel or a cracked lid or whatever, who, is it the city or is it reci? Whose, whose deal is that? So that everybody is watching, let's all get on the same page while we're here.
If you have a broken wheel, you call customer service and say, "I've got a broken wheel", and what we'll do is we'll come out and exchange your cart, give you a, a new cart.
Is there a charge for that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, you know, obviously, we own carts. We're in the process of transitioning over time. Uh, but the easiest thing to do is to call, and we'll switch it out, whether it's a, one of our carts or a Republic cart or, uh, you know, that's, that's the easy solution. And we'll take care of every- And we'll take care of everything on the back end.
My cart's fine, I'm just asking for the general public. You're saying, "Contact the city"?
No, no. Contact Republic.
Okay.
And I believe you can do it on the website.
Call us, and we'll handle it from there.
And there's no charge? Unless you're changing your size?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's another important piece. There are multiple sizes of carts. And so there are times where someone doesn't need the big cart, or others need, you know, bigger size. And so I don't... That's one piece that I don't think we educate probably enough on from our perspective, is that there are options, you know, to... It's not a one-size-fits-all. There are multiple options, and we have larger recycling carts as well.
And I think we should probably put in there that if you're changing to a larger cart, that means you're getting a bigger service, and there's a larger cost.
That's a good point.
Correct.
And vice versa. I know the last time we had an in-depth discussion on this, a smaller cart with every other week pickup and those things, to try to show that there's opportunity to save money if that fits your household.
And, you know, I think you just helped me figure out what my education... My last education piece should be. And that would be, with cart size, and approximately how many bags does your household generate, and what would be the best selection for you? Along with that, and to your point, Councilor Lehman, what are those costs? And put together an education piece, so I...
And replacement process.
Yes. Great, great suggestion.
Save it all for cleanup day.
Yeah, right.
Further questions? Further questions for Bev at Republic? If not, thank you for your report. We do appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. Let's move ahead then to 7B1, presentation by Downtown Shakopee, the old Main Street, now called Downtown Shakopee. Is this going to be two separate presentations?
Yes, sir.
That's okay. Welcome.
Hello, mayors, members of council. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Angie Whitcomb. I've had the pleasure and the privilege of being the president at the Chamber and Visitors' Bureau for the last nine years, and tonight I am here to...
We're having some trouble hearing you, I guess, so can you pull that a little closer if you can? Sorry.
Wow, I never get that. Usually it's, "Hey, Whitcomb." Anyway, mayor, members of council, thanks for having us here tonight. Tonight, I am going to report on the 2018 activities from our Main Street program, and then I'm going to introduce you to our new Main Street Director, who will take you through highlights and keep you on the edge of your seat for 2019. But first, all right, Michael. Oh, right here. No? All right. Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you. I love that you guys are full service. You provide tech support and everything for us. So we've got a couple new council members. The rest of you are pretty familiar with Downtown Shakopee and our Main Street program. And even though the Main Street program is run out of our offices by chamber staff, by volunteers, too many to count, it is truly a collaborative, community-wide effort. And certainly, the city plays no small part in that, and we are very grateful for your support since we first launched this program back in 2014. So, like I said, we've launched it in 2014 with strong financial support from the community, including the city, and mostly emotional support, and some big cheering on and in partnerships with our downtown business community. I'm proud to say that since 2014, we have earned our accreditation every year, which is not the norm. So we're very proud of the program we've built, and it is certainly a testament to this community and the business leaders and the people within it. So our mission is to enhance commerce and bring people to the area through increased awareness of the downtown area. And it's said, "As goes the downtown, so goes the community." Now, on the flip side of that, we hear at the Chamber often, "Downtown gets all your attention and all your love." Well, that's not necessarily true. It's just not always as fun to talk about some of the advocacy efforts we're doing, as opposed to touting Rhythm on the Rails or Holiday Fest. So another part of our mission is to improve connections between the business community, the city, the Chamber, and the other partnerships. And certainly not a small part in that is the citizens of Shakopee. Our goal is to create vibrant gathering spaces, like the Holm Street Tunnel, like Lewis Street, five Wednesdays nights out of the summer, and every Sunday through the summer with our farmer's market. We also want to help contribute to the economic stability of that area, and our goal as a Main Street program and a Chamber is not to throw great parties. That just happens to be a perk, that's an easy avenue for us to accomplish all of the goals I've stated, bringing people downtown and creating economic stability. But our goal, really, in everything we do, is to fill the businesses with people who will ring the cash registers. That's going to help create a strong community by keeping the businesses. And Shakopee is very unique and really blessed in terms of the assets we have in our downtown community. We've got several businesses that are multi-generation family businesses that have seen the best and the worst of times, and I think if feedback we're receiving from them, I think they're pleased with the work that this program has been able to produce in the last several years. So let's talk about what the impact of this program has been since we started. So since 2014, twenty-nine net businesses have been added to just the downtown district. That created one hundred and thirty-nine new jobs. There have been twenty-nine building projects, including rehabs and new building projects, and we've got some exciting things on the horizon, thanks to the work the city's been doing. There have been ten properties sold. There's been over three million dollars in private investment into the downtown, and our program, through the Main Street program and the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota, has been the recipient of over almost fifteen thousand dollars' worth of grant dollars that we've been able to use to do things like launch Rhythm on the Rails, create the marketing programs, the Holm Street Tunnel mural that we did. All of that was supported from the community and certainly from the city, but in addition, we've been able to access grants to help make those dollars go further for our community. Our events in 2018, I feel like, oh my gosh...
No announcements of bands yet?
Not yet. We are working on it. So Republic mentioned how, you know, their logo is... Or their slogan is always "Keep Improving." Well, we've built some pretty good programs, and each year we raise the bar, and then we have to exceed that the following year. So right now, Nate and I are in discussions with booking agent company and trying to find bands that will be bigger and better than the ones we had last year. But let's talk about Rhythm, because last year was a great success again. It was a five-week concert series. We averaged about five thousand people a week, average attendance. It was only possible because we had some really great intern team. My staff is amazing, and we had over sixty volunteers that came out and gave their time to help us pull that off, whether they were taking ticket money, or they were doing everything. But we do need help with recycling, Bev, so I handed her my card on the way up, and thanks, Jay. Apparently, as the liaison, you've learned that handshake very well. We appreciate that. Part of the success of that program and that event is the social media reach that we've been able to achieve, and part of that was in part to our prior Main Street Director really being smart with the money that we received in terms of sponsorships and grant money, to be able to create a marketing program that far exceeded our reach and our expectation. And fortunately, we were able to secure some well-known bands. Oops. And we drew people from as far north as Duluth. We drew people... I mean, we were... As we were taking tickets and selling and checking IDs, it wasn't just Shakopee people. I mean, it was, I'd say probably, three to one, not Shakopee people. And so it's... I think that's a big success, if you think back to the goals we have for this program, and that is to bring people into our community to spend their money. Then last year, just because, you know, Rhythm didn't take up enough of our time or our staff resources, we decided to launch Farmer's Market. And this was really exciting for us, because this is a conversation we've been having for years, and how we needed our own Farmer's Market in downtown. And thanks to the city for making their investments in the Lewis Street parking lot, in the gateway area, and all of the physical improvements you've done to make it a place that's fun to come on a Sunday morning, our Farmer's Market was a big success. So, that said, Nate's got some exciting stuff we're going to launch for 2019. It was a learning year. It was the first time we had ever done a Farmer's Market. You know, we ran from July to September. We realized that season's probably a little short. We ran eleven to four on Sundays. We realized the days were probably a little long, so short season, long days, kind of like parenthood. So this year, we'll be making some of those adjustments. And then Nate's got some fun ideas to draw even more people, but everyone who came down on Sundays, "Are you going to be here next week? Please tell me you're going to be here next week. Is this a new thing?" And so the excitement was there. So the feedback we got was that we were doing something that the community wanted, and they wanted to continue to support it. So thanks to you all for giving us a beautiful space to do that. We'll need to work with the police department and other learning, a little better next year to make sure that our signs are posted for no cars. There always seemed to be one car right in the middle of the market, which, you know, if it's still there next year, we'll probably just turn that into an additional food truck and call it good. But in addition to those two big events during the summer, we moved Pumpkins in the Park to Huber Park, which was a first, and I will admit, I said, "We should not do that. Where are they going to park? Somebody's going to get run over on 101." I was the panicky person in the Chamber, and my team's like, "We're going to be fine. It's going to be great." And of course, it was, and we had more kids than we've ever seen. And then I tell this story quite often. I received a call from the mayor that evening at about 7:45, and I thought, "Uh-oh." You know, we'd cleaned up the park, we'd all gone home, and I thought, "What'd we leave out there? You know, what happened?" And he said, "Angie, I'm at Turtles, and there's a thirty-five-minute wait to get a table." And I was like, "Okay, that feels like not a problem to me. Do you want me to bring you food?" And he said, "The place is packed with families and kids in costumes." And that, to me, said, "All right, this event accomplished the goal. We filled the restaurants downtown, and I guarantee that it wasn't just Turtles at night." So that's why we do those things, and, you know, with the support of the community and the support of the city, always signing our permit request, usually at the last minute, and missing some important details, or Bill Reynolds taking my frantic call as I was almost being run over on Summer Bill during our Holiday Fest, trying to block streets. Thank you for that. But, you know, the Holiday Fest, going into that, that was also a huge success, and not because of the work we did. You know, there's logistics, and, you know, we've got the script, and you've got the deal. Santa will always show up, the tree will be there, but the community, I mean, who was there for the parade? I think we had twenty-five, twenty-six floats, and I thought they were great the year prior. This year, our members and the community partners went above and beyond. It was great. We got a little bit better with the road, keeping people out of the middle of the road, but still some opportunity there. But every year's a learning event, or learning opportunity, and we keep doing it, and we'll improve it next year, but, you know, certainly, this is where it's just the words at the beginning of this presentation, where this is a community-wide collaborative effort, it comes to life in events like that. So we'll continue to do that this upcoming year. We had a staff change in our program last year, and as of July... January seventh, Nate Reed, who I'm going to turn the mic over to now, joined our team as our Main Street Director. Nate comes with a strong background in nonprofit and community development and event planning, primarily concerts, which was attractive to me, as I thought, "Who's going to run Rhythm now? Because I think it might kill me if I have to do it on my own." So Nate is here. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Nate Reed.
Thank you, Andrew.
Welcome, Nate.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for letting me be here today. As Angie said, I am brand new. I've been here a little over a month, and in that month, I've really gotten to enjoy Shakopee, when the weather's nice enough. I moved from Missouri, so we don't quite get this much snow down there. It's been a little bit tough, but definitely enjoyed getting to meet the business community. And that's what this is about. It's about those businesses that come into the community, but it's also about the residents, because the residents need a place to shop, they need a place to eat, they need somewhere to call their community center, which is what downtown is all about. So I'm very excited to be a part of the downtown area and the success that's happened, and see what we can do to grow that in the future. So we're going to talk a little bit about 2019 and some of the exciting plans Angie may let me implement. We'll see. You will notice that Holiday Fest and Pumpkins in the Park aren't on here. Don't fear, we are going to do those. I just don't really see much room for changes or improvements in those, so I'm focusing a little bit more today on what I think we can do a little differently in some areas that we may need some help from our community. And so Rhythm, I've heard great things, but we're going to continue to improve the caliber of the bands that we have in, see if we can draw even more people into the community. As part of that, we're going to need to add vendors, sponsors, and some support services, like Porter Potties and Hand Washing Stations, just some different things along those lines. So we're looking at that and how we can add to Rhythm and make it even better for our business community downtown. Farmer's Market, this one's pretty exciting to me. I've been a part of multiple Farmer's Markets across a variety of communities, and we're looking at what we can do for the businesses downtown, because Sunday is not a day that a lot of businesses are open, so they don't see some of those benefits to having that Farmer's Market downtown. So what if we focused on one day a month, one Sunday a month, that we could ask those business owners to be open? Maybe work with some different community partners, like the Parks Department, city itself, and do something fun for the entire community and focus it downtown. So I came up with a little idea. I'm going to, right now, call it Second Sunday Shakopee. That's open for discussion as well, but looking at some live entertainment options, some increased food vendors, just other things that people can do, maybe bringing a car show back downtown. So that's something that we're really looking at, how we can improve that experience for the vendors, and then also attract new people to that community. One thing that I've learned a lot about over the last six weeks, talking with other Farmer's Market, is how to get kids to buy produce. So that's something that we're looking into, is what programs are out there that would allow kids to buy produce for themselves and get into eating healthy, because it's a lot different when you buy carrots than when your mom fries carrots and brings them to you and says, "You need to eat these." So we're giving kids some of those options and looking at ways that we can do that. So really, just, our goal is to make downtown better, to fill those vacant spots by getting people downtown so that businesses, businesses looking at the community, say, "Wow, they need to... I need to be right there." So we're looking at different ways that we can do that. So thank you guys so much for your support of the program, and if you have any questions for Andrew or I, we'd love to answer them at this time.
Well, Nate, thank you, and welcome to our community. The Downtown Shakopee Group is alive and well and gains momentum every single year. I'll agree with Angie, the Rhythm on the Rails, the Pumpkins in the Park, even our Holiday Fest, when I talk to our... To the residents or the folks that attend those, especially the Rhythm on the Rails and Pumpkins in the Park, it seems like over half are from other communities, and that is truly what you want. I've had people, "Why doesn't... Our community doesn't do this." And they're coming from twenty or thirty miles. "My community doesn't do this. I love it. I wish they would do something like this." Whether it's the bands or the Pumpkins in the Park, the Holiday Fest, I think the parade was twice as long. This year, I think that that involvement is fantastic, and try to keep that going, and the Second Sunday idea is fantastic, but it's bringing, I think, the best of our community together on those Wednesdays and those other activities, even combined with our big fun day for our community, Park and Rec Department. That brings out the best in the community, and keep it going. We have a lot of momentum.
Okay, well, thank you.
Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you being here. Got some exciting, fun stuff. We already got a good base to build on.
Yes.
These projects that the Main Street program, or Downtown Shakopee and Chamber, put on, build that sense of place, you know, our downtown is kind of our heart of our community, but those events that you guys do really just bring out everything. Get a few more people that go into Turtles and get some of their Hey Dude pizzas or Pablo's, you know, we'll have those thirty-minute waits all the time, you know? We might have a problem there, but it's a good problem.
You can add more businesses, so...
That's right. We'll grow some businesses. People want to be a part of this, and so we're excited. I love your ideas on enhancing the Farmer's Market and the one Sunday a month, so got some great opportunities there, so welcome.
Thank you.
Councilor Lehman?
I'd just say thanks for the work that you do, Angie, especially Angie, she's been here a while. Welcome, and appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Councilor Brennan?
My husband and I moved here in 1990, and we spend more time downtown in the last five years than we did all those other years, and I think it's really a effort of... It's really the effort of the business owners in Downtown Shakopee that has brought us there. I spent a lot of time at Rhythm on the Rails, talking to people last year, and I would ask them, "Where are you from?" And I'd get, "Oh, we're from Eden Prairie, Chan Hason." And finally, I'd run into somebody from Shakopee. It was pretty amazing how many people are actually from other areas, and my daughter and I... how many people are actually from other areas. And my daughter and I helped with the Pumpkins in the Park last year handing out candies. And it was like, this, this mound of kids are this stream of kids that are heading towards us. And we're hurrying and putting in the, the candy into the bags. And it was just a great experience for us. And it's, and it's experience that's for our whole family. You know, my daughter and my husband and my sons, when they're home, we all enjoy coming to the events that are going on. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilor Contras?
Angie, thank you. And Nate, welcome. And I just wanted to say, I'm super excited. My face was like, yay, the whole time. And the Kids Zone area, I'm all for it. Go for it. Make it big. I have three, so I have to get them involved. Keep them busy. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, as we talk about trying to continue to enhance all this and, and be bold, even I was just thinking about your, you know, your Second Sunday or trying to enhance something, you know, it'd be great to have a, a weekend where one of your events and to enhance that is to have a couple of fire trucks down there.
That was an idea we had.
Or a weekend, or, you know, for a couple hours on a Sunday, or a couple of squad cars, our crime prevention, you know, for a family to come downtown and to be able to touch that. I know we have our, you know, Public Works Open House Days and that. But even further engagement by the city or a fire truck. Kids love the fire trucks, and certainly I still do. If I could get my hands on one and drive it around, it'd be great. But it, it's those little things that go a long way, that draw connectivity to the, to the residents and even, even the folks that come and visit from out of town.
Yes. Great observation.
Great. Other questions, comments? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
I like the squad cars more now than I did in the past.
Yeah, that's true.
Do you like the back?
Do you like the back?
Mr. Thompson, what are you laughing at?
Where were you when I needed you?
Yeah.
We almost got a new hotel for you.
Lully, it's close.
Welcome, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the 2018 recap of the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau's tourism marketing update. My name is Tim Zunker. I am the VP of Marketing for the organization. I'd like to start to talk a little bit about the mission of Visit Shakopee, or the Convention and Visitors Bureau side of the Chamber of Commerce. Our part of the organization is funded through the local lodging tax statute with the state of Minnesota. We are dedicated to increasing economic impact for our tourism partners and stakeholders through tourism marketing. We actively promote Shakopee to leisure and group travel. We strive to create long-lasting community and city partnerships to help in promotion of our area as a premier travel destination. Talk a little bit about tourism in Minnesota. The tourism industry is a large contributor to the Minnesota economy, with over $15 billion in sales annually, which is almost 41 million per day, over 265,000 full and part-time jobs, which is 11% of the private sector employment, with $5.4 billion in salary and wages, 969 million in state sales tax revenues, which is 18% of all Minnesota state sales tax. In the Minneapolis-St. Paul metro, it's over $10 billion in gross sales and over 172,000 jobs. And bringing that down to Scott County, it's over $388 million in gross sales and 6,006,000 jobs. We have seen steady growth in the tourism industry in Minnesota from $10 billion in 2004 to $15 billion in 2016. And the travel expenditures by season show we are primarily a summer destination, but we do have a good amount of travel during the winter and fall months. Why Tourism Marketing Helps Economic Development. Tourism Marketing Research has long demonstrated that tourism advertising and the visitation it inspires have a positive impact on consumers' image of a destination as a place for leisure, travel, and recreation. According to Longwoods International Research, which they call their halo effect of tourism, tourism marketing helps attract new residents, tourism marketing helps attract a strong workforce, and tourism marketing helps attract new development. And what happens when visitors come to town? The traveler spending by sector shows that when a visitor comes to town, businesses outside of hotels benefit the most. 79% of visitor spending is on quote-unquote "main street," and 21% is on lodging. Without a healthy tourism economy, many of our favorite businesses and establishments may suffer. Our visitor profile. The average household income is over $95,000. The average party is 1.9 people. 72% are married. 70% of people travel here for leisure, with 30% business. And 50% of people that come to the Twin Cities metro area are day trippers. And where do people come from? Three out of four visitors to the metro area are from Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, or the Dakotas, with 47% being from Minnesota. Illinois and Manitoba are also key markets for us. We also market in designated market areas such as Omaha, St. Louis, and Kansas City, and see them as growth market opportunities in line with Explore Minnesota Tourism initiatives. This is just a map that I pulled that shows where inquiries for leads come from. So you can see where the heavy marks are. We get a lot of lead requests from Illinois, Iowa, Wisconsin, Minnesota. And then the national heat map, you can still see that regional. And this is zip codes pulled from one of our hotels that we pulled. So you can see where a lot of our lodging room nights come from. The heat map shows Minnesota is actually very heavy, Wisconsin, Illinois, Iowa, the Dakotas. Shakopee Lodging Tax Recap. The city of Shakopee's lodging tax has grown steadily since 2010. We're still in a very competitive market for hotel growth. So the new hotels being built in Shakopee will help us compete in the marketplace. That is very exciting. The Fairfield looks outstanding.
Is that a percentage of the room cost or a flat fee?
It's a 3% sales tax for the room, per room night.
What did we have in 2016? Was that the...
Ryder Cup was a big part of that. 2017 was a bit of an outlier. It was a little bit of a drop. 2018 kinda came back up, even outside of additional revenues that we received for Super Bowl, which was our best February ever. It still was a good year in 2018, bringing that back up. Our 2018 marketing recap. We still had a continued shift away from traditional media. Our belief is that for a destination marketing organization, we want to tell a full story, which one print ad may not accomplish. We also look at potential ROI and where we can best utilize marketing dollars. We have a heavy emphasis on paid search for ticket, hotel, and guide lead conversions. When we use paid search for Valley Fair tickets, hotels, and visitor information, we can control the keywords, try to pull potential room nights from neighboring communities through our keyword buys. Content creation. With the use of content creation and distribution, we can market big to small. We can use large venues, attractions, but also hit on unique shopping, dining, and events in our articles. And the growth of video. We feel the use of video helps with awareness and branding, especially with the heavy shift towards video on social media. And then in addition to that, from Google Think, 66% of consumer video, consumers view videos when thinking about taking a trip. So it is an essential marketing tool moving forward as we go along with marketing. Our flow chart for advertising does show that shift in marketing towards the digital side, very little done in print, our visitor's guide, and then a cooperative ad. This is our Visit Shakopee Analytics Report for 2018. So visitshakopee.org. You can see increases in users, sessions, page views, and new users. In addition, most of our, over 50% of our traffic does now come from organic search. So people going to our website, people are finding our website, looking for events in Shakopee, things to do in Shakopee, restaurants in Shakopee, et cetera. So just by us continuing to build out information and content in that website draws a lot of people looking for information on things to do in Shakopee, finding us without us having to pay for that marketing effort.
Most of them are by mobile device?
Yes.
So they're on the go?
They're on the go. So, you know, our current website is mobile responsive, so very easy to look at from a mobile device, a tablet, desktop. It fits all those platforms. We are refreshing the Visit Shakopee website right now to make it even more mobile friendly, but also inclusion of a lot more video, a lot more photography, different things like that, to sell the destination as a visual instead of more, a lot of, instead of a lot of copy. Our Facebook analytics has shown steady growth since 2014, starting at 272 likes in 2014 up to over 14,000 now. And our YouTube analytics, you've seen substantial growth in YouTube views and YouTube watch minutes. Some of those are outliers. If you take a look at September, October, November, we share the channel with the Shakopee, or the Chamber. It is one channel. So that is 2018 campaign videos and interviews. But you can also see in May through August how our advertising campaigns help with views and watch time minutes. Our 2019 strategic landscape. A lot of changes are still happening in the Minneapolis-St. Paul metro. A lot more hotel inventory is still being built throughout the entire metro area. From 2016 to 2017, there was a 22% increase in hotel rooms. And then going forward, there's been more building going on since then. But visitation to the metro area continues to increase. Competition for the travel dollar is fierce. The metro area has 20-plus CBBS alone, with talk of more to come in some other of the communities. And we are all competing for the same visitors and need to continue to stay relevant in a crowded marketplace. Some of our strategic objectives for our organization. Continued focus on leisure with a goal of increase in overnight stays. Continue to build out our video library for growing focus on video through social media and connected television. Continue to build out the group market with primary focus on sports. An example of that is, we worked with an organization that's going to bring an Ironman cycling event on June 15th and tie it in with the Park and Rec Department's big fun day. So they'll be running 100-mile route, a 60-mile route, 25-mile route, and a family route going out south into Scott County. More initiative to non-peak period business. Leverage resources via partnerships with the city and area businesses. Track conversions of people coming into Shakopee who saw our campaign. Being a little techie, we're gonna geofen Shakopee. And then if somebody sees our campaign and we are able to capture that information on a device, we are going to see if that device comes into Shakopee and then track conversions that way. That'll help us build out profiles and help us build out marketing efforts and different things like that. Similarly, we want to build out profiles of attendees for events that are happening to help better enhance our marketing efforts. And that is what I have. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I have a question about the, the fee. We have, you know, I don't know, the rumor, the, the number I've always heard is 10 million visitors in our community between our four major events. Trying to get them to stay overnight, the, the lodging tax, has that ever been looked at? Other communities use those funds to drive and sell their brand and to enhance that. Have they ever looked at that? Because it's kind of a fee associated with folks from out of town. Is that, is that, is our, that lodging tax in the middle compared to other communities? Is it high? Is it low?
It's pretty standard across the state. That 3% is a state standard unless a community has an exemption in place. Bloomington, Minneapolis-St. Paul are some that I can think of, and they're higher. Brooklyn Center has a six and a half, which the 3% goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for marketing purposes, and then the additional goes to fund the Earl Brown Heritage Center. But those are exemptions.
Them are state statute exemptions, aren't they?
I'm sorry?
Them are state statute exemptions, are they not?
Yes, yes.
I know, like Duluth, and they get a lot of tourism. They have a big, they do have a, certainly a big tourism fee associated with that. And the, the city allocates money back into tourism where tourism dollars can be derived from. And, and they, you know, I think the city council votes on, on those dollars. But I, I thought I would ask about that fee, because I, we looked at it last year, and we wanted to see, make sure there's enough compliance, right? Did we do an audit last year on that lodging tax, I think, to see that? So I just thought I would ask that question.
Yeah, and Duluth is similar to Minneapolis-St. Paul, Bloomington, some of the other cities. I know part of, they have their standard lodging tax as part of the state statute, but then additional lodging tax that goes, I think, I, I mean, they're even funding things like the ski, ski resort and different things like that. So, but that's on top of the 3%.
Councilor Whiting?
Well, you, you certainly have a lot of opportunities with our tourist attractions. And the mayor is right, you know, we're trying to get them to stay and have that hotel stay. That helps you too, get them down to our downtown, to our restaurants and things. And I, I know you've got some great opportunities on social media and some of the electronic, but I still look for those magazines when I'm out at the tourist places outstate, you know, looking for our Shakopee magazine and...
Definitely.
I don't, I don't see it often enough. I like to see, see those, you know, I'm a printer too, so I like to see that print stuff out there. But anytime, I hate to cut that off completely, because, you know, those things stick around the house. I have files on different areas where I go. And so I don't want to forget about that print part of it, too.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Whiting. Actually, if you could let me know where you're not seeing those, if it's Travel Information Centers, they should have those out.
South Dakota or North Dakota? I can't remember where.
Yeah. Well, if it's out, if it's Moorhead, it would be out. But if it's in North Dakota, there's a chance that it's not. But we do, we still do a visitor's guide annually. We just got it in, and I actually have some. I just put them out right outside the door here. We print 22,000 this year. So then we send them to Travel Information Centers. We send them to Mall of America, where the Explore Minnesota Tourism has their set.
Is there a mileage that you use? Do you do some of those bigger outstate ones on the, on the freeways, or?
Yes, almost all of those coming in. We run through the state. So coming in from Wisconsin, coming in from the south, up in Duluth, we have one. In Saint Cloud on Highway 10, there's one going up from Moorhead, Grand Forks, et cetera. So we do send the guides out through our state initiatives to place at those Travel Information Centers.
And certainly, if I was from out of town and coming to Shakopee, most every historic town that I go to visit in the summer, I usually go right to the Chamber website and order a book. Either I can download it, or I can have it sent, do that a couple months ahead of our trip, and then plan the trip around those activities and, and what you have in the community. You, you guys do the same thing, right?
We do that, yes. We do. And that regional map showed a lot of, where we're getting a lot of those inquiries from, whether it's from the state, or whether people going to the Visit Shakopee website, or the Chamber website.
Okay.
It was either Laverne or Marshall, where we stopped at a rest stop. And we're just kind of browsing through everything that's in there, stretching legs and stuff. And you guys were there, so.
The other thing, if I could add, you know, when I'm visiting different communities, I do stop by the Visitors Bureau and see what I may have missed. And I know Shakopee's is never open on a Saturday. And I've mentioned this before, and I know you don't want to be in on a Saturday either. But maybe there's some opportunity where we have some of those summer interns or something working that desk on a Saturday. I know we have some of the kiosks and things where you can pick it up. But just wanted to put it out there again.
Definitely.
Nothing like talking to a real person, though. Other comments, questions? Comments, questions? If not, thank you very much. Very much enjoyed the downtown presentation and the Chamber presentation. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right. Moving along here. 8A, the bill list is before us, and there was a couple questions on that that got answered from Bill Reynolds. Thank you very much. 8B, Liaison and Administrative Report. Council, Councilor Brennan?
Today, I went to the Benedictine Living Community of Shakopee Kickoff. It's gonna be a great business in the community. I attended the Live, Learn, and Earn meeting on housing last week. And February 8th, the scale meeting was canceled due to, due to weather. I did get the email from Mr. Reynolds regarding scale and our annual fee. I haven't had a chance to look through that yet. So that should be pretty interesting. And then we had two sets, we talked about that before, our two sessions of board and commission interviews. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilor Lehman?
I attended the SPUC meeting just before I came here tonight. So it was kind of a full fulfilling day. What did I have? The Windermere Booster Station, bid results roughly $2.5 million. There's a push to speed the project, get, try to get it done by October. The developer would like to get occupation on some of the houses that are being built. Added a little bit of cost to the booster station. They still need storage capacity, so this booster station in Windermere is going to serve roughly 200 plus the Benedictine, if I pronounced that right. It will serve more capacity, but in order to do that, they're going to need the storage facility on the next higher-up elevation and then use the gravity to feed it. So that's going to be an additional cost for that, too.
Have they secured a site there? I mean, this development's been in the works for a long time, then.
You know, I think they have a site up on the hill.
Yeah.
They just don't have a tank put in. So they're doing a booster station that's going to serve the 200 houses in that quadrant that is on that elevation. In order to get to the next elevation for the other development, there's going to have to be that tank put in.
Right.
Storage capacity. The one outage on 5th of February, it was an arrestor, 12 customers, 80 minutes. I can't remember the number. It was like, every year it goes up how many suicide animals kill themselves on our power poles. But they're going to try this new, it's almost like a, they had one there, it looks like a toboggan material that goes around the pole, and it's three feet high, and they like to put them up high, especially on ones with transformers, because the animals can't crawl on the wood pole. Not a lot of cost. The goal is to cut animal outages by 50%, so we're going to see how that works out.
Save the squirrels.
Well, if they're not up on the lines, they can't get fried, I guess, so some truth to that possibly. They did talk about the joint meeting. The date of the 12 has their finance person, it's got a pre-scheduled vacation or something, so it's probably going to be a little bit later than that. They were shot around some dates and stuff, and that's when I had to go because it was 10 minutes to 7. I said, "Sorry, I got to go." They'll be getting in contact with our staff and their staff to try to figure out a date that works where their finance person's available. And I think I covered most of the highlights of the meeting, for what portion I was there, anyway.
All right. Thank you very much. I met with Chairman Vig at the Shakopee Minnewakansoo Community the other day, just trying to get an idea of their plans here in the future. Also met with Canterbury Park New Development Director, Jason Hoggan, talking about the big picture and the big build out there. He's brand new, so I think he's been on the job a month. Very excited. I, too, also attended the Benedictine Health Systems groundbreaking today. This is going to be a fabulous facility, expansion of their presence in our community, meeting the needs of our residents and hopefully new residents. I got to speak to it. The Benedictine organization has a strong heart, placed my heart, very well-connected with them, and couldn't be more proud of having what I think is the Cadillac in care and passion in our community. So very proud to have them here. And that's my report. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Wednesday, we, I met the Main Street or Downtown Shakopee meeting. Talked a lot about what we talked about tonight, so nothing really to add there. And then we had the two interview sessions.
Thank you very much. Counselor Contreras?
This Saturday, past Saturday, I sat in to listen what the Latino leaders are doing to just continue working on issues, especially mental health and just other issues at St. Francis. You know, it's just, it's just a meeting that they do just to see what the issues are and to try to figure, you know, solving them, how we can, how we can better help people who are going through these issues. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reynolds, Administrator Report?
Just a reminder that we're expecting to have a couple more snow events coming here relatively quickly. Our people are on the streets. All of our people are on the streets. All of our trucks are on the streets. They will be working starting at 5:00 a.m. today. We put some information out a couple weeks ago in regards to our priority list, and obviously, you know, we take that list to heart, and we would like to be able to hit everything on the list. But there are times where we have multiple events that that's just not possible. I would encourage all residents to please be patient and understand that if our people during these events aren't in the truck, they're sleeping or eating. And, you know, they do that so they can get back out there and hit it again. So we've got a great group of guys that are out there that work these issues, and like I said last meeting, it's almost kind of a ballet when you see them work in tandem and what they're able to do with these big monstrous trucks. So please be thoughtful about them as they're out on the roads and recognize that we're doing everything we can to deal with Mother Nature.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'd like to point out, and I'm pretty sure I'm correct on this, after tomorrow, we'll have a record in a history of snowfall for February in Minnesota.
Yeah, it's, you're right. It is up there, and we've had those multiple events where literally, you know, you've got 12, 24 hours, and then bam, you get hit again. So think about those Tier Four priorities, and, I'm sorry, we just can't get to those in that kind of a timeframe.
Well, let's also remember, they're talking about this February record, and records, I guess, are meant to be broken, but, you know, our yearly average is 55, 56 inches per year. It's been a long time, four or five years, since we had 70-plus, so I think we're just a little short of 40 right now for the year. So we're getting there, but we're not even to our average, and we're going to help the cause tomorrow night. I do think that we have a number-one Public Works Department. They work very hard, taking and taking care of our streets, and I see we were proactive on Facebook today, or put out a little thing about, "Our crews will be ready," and please give them a friendly honk, a wave. They're doing their job. Give them some space as well. So that's kind of my comment on that.
If I could add to that a little bit, there was some good discussion on the social media from the city about shoveling out those fire hydrants. I think that's important. If you have elderly neighbors, make sure they're okay and try and help them with the shoveling, too, if you can. That's what we do. So thank you.
All right. Next item. Counselor Lehman, other business?
Actually, I got 14 of them tonight.
All right, next item?
All right. I have nothing.
Please do. We said we'd have this meeting over quick, and enjoy that. The largest supermoon of 2019 tonight. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to adjourn to March 5, 2019 at 7:00 p.m.
Second?
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:17.